Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Tao, Mayor Protem Talamontes, Councilmember Valenzuela, Vice Mayor Maple. Councilmember Gera will be absent. Councilmember Jennings.
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vang.
I'm here.
I expect Councilmember Kaplan momentarily. And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Mayor Protem Talamontes, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanom people, the Southern Maidu, Valley Plains Mewak, Patwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wiltumranteria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now, salute.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, a very good afternoon to you. First, let me begin by apologizing to the young people especially. Time is valuable and we're a little bit late. That's because we had a number of important items in our executive closed session and it took a little longer than maybe we expected. So, thank you for your patience, but we are really excited tonight because this is one of the special meetings of the entire year where we get to hear from not just the future of the city, but the present of the city. Young people who commit themselves, you, to a summer of study, of getting to know one another, and of learning how to solve or make better complicated public policy challenges that we all face. And I will tell you now, this is my eighth Summer at City Hall presentation, and I know there have been ideas that have come out of your inspiration, your predecessors' inspiration, and worked together that we have taken up as serious policy matters here at the city. Our fervent hope is that this experience leads you to a lifetime commitment to public service of some kind where you commit yourselves to hopefully the Sacramento community, but your community, and to stand with and for people who need your help on any cause that resonates from your heart and that is part of who you are. So, we can't wait to get started, and we're going to listen to the presentations, and then there may be questions and comments after each of the presentations. After all eight presentations, we'll take public comment, but we want to hear the public presentation, we want to hear the presentations from you first. And so, welcome to your house, Sacramento City Hall. Who's going first? Do we have an introduction here for, yes, all of this? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Sorry, I was waiting for consent.
Not a consent calendar, no.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney, and Madam Clerk. My name is Sarah Musser, and I oversee the civic engagement unit lying within the youth, parks, and community enrichment department. I'm delighted to be here this evening to open for the Summer at City Hall presentations and introduce you to the amazing group of high school students, which two groups are sitting behind me, and the remaining groups are in Room 1119 listening to your comments and your warm welcome, Mr. Mayor. These students attend school at Sac City Unified School Districts, Natomas Unified School District, and Twin Rivers Unified School District. We have 72 participants and 15 peer mentors. Peer mentors are students returning from last year to help guide this year's participants. They're in central in mentoring and providing daily encouragement to participants. Of the 72 participants, 14 reside within D1, 16 reside within District 2, or six, excuse me, six reside within District 2, 10 within District 3, four within District 4, seven within District 5, six within District 6, seven within District 7, and six within District 8. And finally, we have 12 out-of-class students, meaning they reside outside of the city limits and attend one of the schools that we partner with, or they live within the city limits and attend a school outside of the partnering districts. These students have been with us at City Hall since June 27th. They've run into a few of you and have enjoyed every minute that you've been able to spend with them. In those short five weeks, they have spent countless hours learning about local government, civic engagement, the city of Sacramento, and much more. One of their major program requirements is to create and present to you a project. Projects are centered around local issues that you feel need more attention. I'll wrap it up in just a minute, as I know you're not here to listen to me, but I did want to mention that in addition to the daily classroom instruction, project planning, the students were also placed in internships. This is the first time since post-pandemic. They were placed within community-based organizations throughout the city that the city grants, so our grantees that the Office of the Youth Development Administration Office, formerly OYD, their grantees, as well as various city departments. This program is almost completely run by youth, however, the support staff is critical in helping to enrich and experience and deliver curriculum daily. Our city staff include Rhonda Patterson, Maria Vides Medal, and Dominique Kerndon, as well as our awesome summer, or, excuse me, Sacramento City Unified School District teachers, Nicole Quinn, Nicole Castles, and Christopher Manning. So, without further ado, I'd like to welcome our first link crew, The Mindful Mouse. Mice, The Mindful Mice.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jordan Liu. I am one of the, I am the peer mentor for my team, The Mindful Mice. I am a rising senior at West Campus High School, and now introduce my team.
Good evening, City Council. My name is David Excel Onanua. I'm a rising junior, and I'm a student at Natomas High School.
Good evening, Council. My name is Daniel Span. I'm a rising junior at John F. Kennedy.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Michael Rodriguez. I am a rising junior at the School of Engineering and Sciences.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Coral Awad, and I'm a rising junior at Rosemont High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Soraya Sayturn. I'm an upcoming senior at John F. Kennedy.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Camille Dixon, and I'm a rising sophomore at Carver-Sutter High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Kieran Virchima, and I'm a rising senior at Natomas Pacific Pathways Prep High.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Grace Gao, and I'm a rising sophomore at John F. Kennedy High School.
Firstly, we'd like to thank you all for allowing us to address the issue of mental health. As a group, we have researched and collated data from various sources and as well as major resources. Let's get further in depth in this presentation. Mental health is a profoundly personal journey. It is about embracing the light and the dark to find harmony. Recognizing the importance of this journey, we're committed to prioritizing mental health by providing deeper insights, valuable resources, and spreading awareness. Together, we can foster a community where mental well-being is understood, supported, and celebrated.
How do we ensure success within our project? The main goals that we aim to accomplish through our project include informing, educating, and influencing those who are struggling with similar mental health issues. We will fulfill these goals by providing more awareness about the many obstacles of mental health, as well as providing possible solutions.
All my mental health issues in teenagers include depression, anxiety, attention-deficient disorders, or eating disorders, which include general symptoms, but not limited to prolonged sadness, hopelessness, and fatigue. There are signs you may notice, like brash changes in diet, personality, and neglecting the responsibilities. Some teenagers may not show any signs at all, in which case it is best to communicate with them if you are concerned in any way.
Mental health symptoms could be continued due to substance abuse. The two major personality disorders that are highly correlated in regards to substance abuse are borderline PDI and antisocial PDI. A finding shows that in Sacramento, 1 in 5 youth have been diagnosed with emotional, behavioral, or mental health disorder. Additionally, 50,000 students are diagnosed with mental health disorders, and only 40,000 of those get the needed treatment.
We sent out a survey to local youth across all districts. In total, we received 101 responses from answers from individuals aged 13 to 39. In total, 24.8% of our responses came from individuals aged 15 and 17. In our survey, we asked the question, "Have you ever experienced problems with mental health?" A total of 72.3% of our survey takers responded with yes. Then we asked if they have ever reached out for help, and 67.3% said no. This shows how we are failing as a community to provide our youth with resources, as well as the support needed in order for an individual to feel comfortable receiving help. Then we also asked, "Do you still feel the effect of what you have been through in terms of mental health?" 47.5% responded with sometimes, while 23.8% responded with yes. If our community does not actively address mental health issues or mental health overall, the lack of awareness can lead to delayed diagnosis or treatments in youth. The youth are our future, and we must give a lending hand in order for them to reach their potential. Furthermore, we asked youth to state their experience with mental health if they like. One survey taker said, "I have abandonment issues, mild anxiety, depression, and extreme suicidal thoughts. I feel like it's a burden to carry these mental issues, and if I didn't have them, then I'd be a normal person everyone enjoys being around." It is essential for our community to provide resources to everyone, such as family and friends. Otherwise, this leads to discouragement in speaking up and asking for help. As a group, we came together and created a video.
Was he here? Sounds good.
Did you guys do the math homework? It was so hard.
Nah, I already tried that one, I knew about it a while. The math homework was the least of my worries. He was on it with her.
Dude, that was the easiest part.
Whatever, no, it was mine.
How was your date today?
It's a little painful, thank you for asking. Oh, wait, he's in my math class, and he wasn't really paying attention that much, and he was reserved.
I noticed that too, and he's usually active when you're wedding, but he's been sitting out with the bleachers this entire week.
Yeah, those are the signs of mental illness.
Hey, are you okay? Yeah, I know that she was jerking off with my bird.
Oh, um, I don't know.
Here's a pamphlet. My friend's going through the same stuff. I know that she was struggling, so check out the pamphlet, it has all the resources
This is our Pathway to Wellness pamphlet. It is one of our key components to our mental health outreach efforts. It is designed to reach audiences without easy access to online media or resources. It includes general information and essential points about mental health. Additionally, it features a QR code providing a gateway for the already available online resources. We plan to ensure the pamphlet's distribution in spaces to ensure broad access to our already available resources.
While the pamphlet is extremely beneficial to local members within the community, we have formulated a social media post that is able to reach a larger group of individuals. This post includes our statement, as well as a QR code, which further leads you to our website, which contains more information on mental health and its science. Mental health within teens is not only a large issue within our community, but everywhere around us. Having a resource that can reach individuals anywhere they go is extremely important if we want to see any change in today's teenagers' mental health.
This is our prototype website, Pathway to Wellness. Our motto is empower mine, illuminate lives, together supporting teen mental health every step of the way. The website is another way to seek or find help. We have four other pages besides the homepage. For example, there's a "What We Have Done to Help," the research page, our survey with survey response, and for the last page, there's resources and services page. Some resources that are suggested are subscribed medication from your doctor. You can also go to counseling or talk to a therapist. We have provided links of mental health services.
As a group, we have discovered and listed ways to implement helpful solutions that cater to mental health issues in our community. These solutions entail the following: distributing pamphlets to libraries, schools, coffee shops, bathrooms, and local community events. Many are silent about their issues and disguise their troubles as happiness. Our focus is to shine a light on these issues. All in all, we look forward to encouraging a positive change in the mental health aspect of the Sacramento area.
Thank you, City Council, for your time and attention. If you have any questions, feel free to ask any of us. Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments from my colleagues, Mayor Protem Talamontes? Go ahead.
I always ask this question to the group, so how'd you get your team name?
Say it again?
How'd you decide on your team name?
We decided on our team name because we wanted our name to be related to mental health, so we felt like using the word mindful would connect the most. And we also wanted both of the words in our team names to begin with the same letter, so that's why we chose Mindful Mice.
I just want to thank you for choosing such an important topic. I think at the beginning of Summer City Hall, no one picked mental health, and now I know the last several years, more groups choose it. And what I especially appreciated was the video and how you illustrated something that I've often thought that, you know, in many cases, who the best therapist is? It's a friend, right? It's peer-to-peer, and that's what you really demonstrate, caring for your fellow student and being aware when they might be acting different or being sad, and then reaching out to help them. It's really powerful. Thank you. We've got Councilmember Kaplan, Vang, and then Jennings. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, quick question. How do I get digital access to that pamphlet?
So, the pamphlet includes a QR code. So, on the pamphlet itself, there's already like resources that just are immediate or just overall, general, but the QR code is links to our website, and there's a lot more in-depth information there that you can find, and there's more resources, phone numbers, and just people you can see.
So, what if I wanted to make a good quality print of that pamphlet? Where would I find that?
So, the pamphlet right now is just a prototype or just an idea, so we would have the basically file for it, so you can send, we can send it...
Would you send that to my office? Because I've already asked my staff to print them out so that I can have them at my booth. I have a weekly farmer's market and have them at my event. Because here's the thing, you made an ask. One of those asks was not for councilmembers to put it out, so I'm adding that to your list, that we as councilmembers are out in the community, and people always come to our tables, that that could be a pamphlet that we have at our tables, and I'd like to have it at mine. So, good job.
First. Member Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to first just take this time to say congratulations and great job on your presentation. I know it takes a lot to be up here to share the work that you all have done, and I'm just really proud of each and every one of you. Mental health is such a huge issue. I think we have champions on the dais, but especially our mayor, who's been really bringing awareness to this issue for a very, very long time, and it's so great to see our young people also centering this issue that impacts our youth. Something that I just want to point out, your survey I thought was so awesome, that you had 100 respondents. I'll just be honest with you, sometimes we don't even get that many folks responding to surveys, so I think it's really great, and you should be proud of yourself that you got a lot of respondents. And what stood out to me is that, you know, you share the data of 1 out of 5 youth, but when you asked the question for the 100 respondents on the survey, have they experienced problems in mental health, and over 73%, you know, assured that they did. It's staggering data, even the data that you collected, right? And it just speaks to the need of services and support systems that we need in our city. And so, I just wanted to say, great job, really proud of you, similar to Councilwoman Kaplan. I think it's great that you have this mock-up brochure, but this website, would love to also share it at our farmer's market. We all have community centers and libraries in our district as well, and so really happy to share that information, and just great job, and I'm really proud of each and every one of you.
Anybody, we got Councilmember Jennings, of course. Yes?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just want to share my pride with each one of you as well, and how successful you've been in your topic. And you set a goal as to putting this together at the beginning, how long ago? And you should all be smiling from ear to ear, because I think you accomplished an incredible goal of letting us know what is mental health, what are the signs, and how do we take action? And you did a great job. And so, everybody up here wants to understand how to get the digital print of this so that they can then take it to all of their venues and pass it out for you. So, for all of us councilmembers, make sure you send it to every single one of us, so we can then be your feet on the ground, taking it out to everybody to continue your work. So, I'm just very proud of each one of you. You worked incredibly well together. Each one had their role, they stood up, they punched up, they talked out loud, they made it clear what we were saying and what you said. You just did a great job all the way around, so I'm really proud of you. I just want to start the applause for the group.
All right, the other seven groups have a high bar here. It's all good, all great. Good job, you guys. Thank you. Let's hear from Group 2. This is the Domestic Violence Awareness, the Red Ravens.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Mason Takamoto. I'm a junior at Natomas Pacific Pathways Prep High School, and I'm one of the link crew leaders or peer mentors for this group, the Red Ravens.
Hello, City Council. My name is Bianca Koshkar. I am a junior at Ponderosa High School, and I'm also a peer mentor slash link crew for the Red Ravens.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Joseph Williams. I'm a rising senior attending New Technology High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Julia Doherty, and I'm a rising senior at McClatchy High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Malia Kennon, and I'm a sophomore at McClatchy High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jennifer Nitesz, and I'm a rising junior attending Grant Union High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Daisy Leon Sains, and I am a sophomore at John F. Kennedy.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Leah Castell, and I go to George Washington Carver as a rising sophomore.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ace Vang. I'm a rising senior for Realelinda High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Michael Brown, and I am a rising senior at Natomas Pacific Pathways Prep High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Kayla Johnson, and I'm a rising junior at Encom High School.
The definition of domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior...
The mic, just move the mics a little bit so we can hear you. There we go.
Domestic violence is, the definition of domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior in any relationship that is used by one partner to gain or maintain control over another intimate partner.
The main problem about domestic violence is how unaware people are about this topic. We had sent out an anonymous poll to students in Twin Rivers, Natomas, and Sacramento City districts, asking them various questions about domestic violence. 80% of students who took this poll are female. 67% said they knew what domestic violence meant, and 82% then said they have not been in a platonic or romantic relationship where they experienced domestic violence, while unfortunately, 17% had. 63% of students then said they knew someone who experienced domestic violence. Lastly, only 20% said they knew all the resources to use in this situation.
We as a group understand that domestic violence is an extremely serious topic that unfortunately many people have to deal with in this day and age, which is why one of our main obje, which is why one of our main objectives is to spread awareness about this topic and help identify signs that domestic violence has taken place.
Victims of domestic violence often end up with lasting effects from their traumatic experience, such as PTSD, depression, anxiety, and overall lack of trust and low self-esteem. So, the truth is, even if the abuse ends, they will still have lasting scars. This is why there needs to be more awareness upon domestic violence, so the victims can receive the help they need.
These statistics show the amount of cases rising over the past three years.
To get our message out and spread awareness for domestic violence, our team created a flyer and collection of stickers that can be put up around our community. The flyer gives extended details about the signs of abuse and where you can get help, including a hotline and physical shelters located in Sacramento. The sticker also contains a hotline and step-by-step instructions for a silent hand signal victims can use to communicate that they need help. Our plan for these advertisements would be to put them in bathrooms, schools, doctors' offices, and other public places, and we need your help to make them a reality.
Assemblies are one of the many ways to get a message out to high school students, and it's also the most crucial part of our plan to achieve our goal of making domestic violence more aware to the youth. Each member on our team has attended a suicide prevention or fentanyl awareness assembly at their school, but has yet to attend one addressing domestic violence. This is very important, considering how many people don't even know what domestic violence is. If passed, the presentations could be held numerous times in October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. These assemblies would cover the signs and resources to go to if you are a victim or know someone who needs it. The stickers previously stated would be passed out to everyone attending, as well as flowers and purple ribbons to wear. Our video was created in order to show the two types of domestic violence and what you could do to seek help from others. The video starts off with a normal, happy couple, which soon shows a girlfriend trying to degrade her boyfriend. This video focuses on a domestic violence case involving a male, because nowadays, the topic seems more stereotyped towards women, leaving little room for male victims to shine. Here's our video.
Are you freaking serious? You had one job. What are you actually talking about?
I don't know, like, I just forgot.
How do you forget one word?
Why are you yelling at me?
Because you're stupid.
My gosh.
Come on, let's go. I'm gonna wanna hold your hand.
This is an example of a movie. It can come in different ways.
Why did you do that?
Oh!
Are those my chips? No, you had enough. Are you trying to call me fat or something?
No, 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 I'm not. I just thought you had any...
These are my chips!
What are you doing?
You had enough!
I literally bought these for myself!
I'm sorry!
You're so stupid!
Oh, I'm actually so sorry. I didn't, I didn't mean to. I'm so sorry. I'm fine.
You know I love you. You know I love you.
This is an example of physical abuse. It can come in different ways. Hey, our, oh, hey? My girl just hit me. She hit you? That's not okay. Why not? Because she love you. You know that's domestic violence, right?
Exactly.
Domestic violence is a pattern where one partner wants to gain control over you.
Oh, okay, maybe I'm in. How do I get help?
If you need help, you can do this sign. It's one of the many ways people can know that you're in trouble.
Think so, but it's not on my phone.
Please remember that they don't have to hit you, choke you, or slam your head against the wall in order for it to be domestic violence. They can degrade you, humiliate you, blame you, scream at you, lie to you, cheat on you, or even try to control you. It's still domestic violence.
Our PSA video is about the after-effects and influence of domestic violence in a person's life. It also spreads awareness of how to call for help, expressing the right signs for it. Now, the purple paint represents the lasting effects of domestic abuse in a victim's life. Here's the video. Sixty of our youth have witnessed or known someone who has experienced domestic abuse. 27% of those youth don't know where to get the resources if they're in danger.
Us as the citizens of Sac need to address the issue and importance of domestic violence. If you are someone you know needs support, you can go to the National Domestic Violence
Some key takeaways we can take from this is domestic violence needs more recognition as awareness is important to help prevent domestic violence from continuing on a victim. Another takeaway is identifying domestic abuse early to prevent long-lasting effects from happening to the victim.
Citizens of Sacramento, please remember, don't be silent in domestic violence.
Thanks for listening. Feel free to ask any questions.
Again, bringing to the forefront an issue that doesn't get talked about enough, and you really... you really brought awareness to this, and the video again was powerful. Councilmember Jennings?
Yeah. So, I was really impressed with everything that I saw. Again, how you work together, how you put together all the different definitions, the signs, and then what to do. You always had a solution at the end so that those who may be going through it silently now know what to do publicly in order to get the kind of help that they need. So, I really loved the way you put it together. And then, the theme of all of this is, don't be silent in domestic violence. So, can you do that one more time for me, together? One, two, three, go.
Don't be silent in domestic violence.
Oh, I love that. I love that. That is great.
Who's next? Councilmember Kaplan, please.
I again want to commemorate you on addressing a difficult issue. I've not been quiet of having been a domestic violence survivor and having gone to WEAVE to get a restraining order. And here's the thing, I was an attorney at that time, and I didn't know who to turn to except one of my fellow law students worked at WEAVE. And so, I think it's, had I had a class or understood more of what that was in high school, I think that would have saved me as I became a young adult. So, I think you guys brought up great things that you can do. I see each of your high schools, which is at all of our districts. My charge to you is now, maybe when school starts, to go talk to your VP or your principal, and how can one of these, your video, be presented at a rally? And where can you put up that information? And I don't want to speak for all my colleagues, but I know that each district you are in, they will happily help you. Our MP3 in Endercombe, I got you. But I know the rest of you will have the same support from your council members because I really think this is something that you can start and ask at our schools to do that'll make a difference so that you educate younger so many people won't experience domestic violence. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Kaplan, for sharing your story, just with our young people and with us. And to all the young folks, thank you so much for your presentation. A topic like domestic violence is very heavy, gender-based violence, domestic violence, but I really appreciate y'all centering this topic in particular because when we think about addressing domestic violence, it starts with awareness around teen, teen dating violence, right? And the video, you being the voice to talk about signs, recognizing signs early, is so important. I know research have shared with us that for young people who have experienced trauma, poverty, a range of adverse childhood experiences, they're more likely to become victims of gender-based violence and domestic violence in households that they grew up in, generational trauma, right? And so, I just really appreciate y'all centering this very heavy topic. And as we talk about domestic violence, right, like, it's not like a foreign thing. It's not like it happens to adults, but it really starts with young people and learning what healthy behaviors are. And that's really addressing teen dating violence, which if we don't address that, it leads to domestic violence. So, just wanted to say, great job. Really proud of all of you. And please, yes, I'm gonna be asking my staff to reach out to Sarah to get the information from all of the groups. You all should be very, very proud of yourselves. So, great job.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thanks, Mayor. So, I played a lot of competitive sports growing up, and picking up, picking your team name was always so important because it defines you and your group and your interactions. So, Red Ravens, we decided that.
We came up with our name as a group because we were assigned a color day one, so we wanted to incorporate red into our name. And we thought about ravens because they're super smart, intelligent birds that problem solve very well, and we felt that that reflected our team and the values that we were gonna apply to this project.
Love it. Thank you.
All right. Any other, any other messages you want to leave us with? Do it one more time. Please.
One, two, three.
Don't be silent in domestic violence.
Thank you so much. Let's get Group Three, Student Mental Health Related to Academic Stress. This is the Blue Jays.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Wayland Zhu. I'm a rising senior at Natomas Pacific Pathways Prep High School, and I'm one of the peer mentors for my link crew, the Blue Jays.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Hunter Usain. I'm a rising senior at Sacramento New Technology High School, and I am also a peer mentor slash link crew leader for the Blue Jays.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Tanuja Balasa. I am a rising sophomore at Natomas Pacific Pathways Prep.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Kai Se Lee, and I'm a, I'm a rising sophomore at John F. Kennedy High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sireya Watar Bun. I am a rising junior at Endercombe High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Neeraj James, and I'm a rising sophomore at Grant Union High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Alex Bonilla, and I'm a rising sophomore at West Campus High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Anshiga Coker, and I am a rising sophomore at Endercombe High School.
Good evening, Council. My name's Naomi Asparza, and I am a rising senior, junior at Rosemont High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Laigila, and I'm a rising sophomore at John F. Kennedy High School.
Good evening, Council. My name is Rose Lemus, and I am a rising sophomore at CK McClatchy High School.
To introduce you to our topic, I want to take you back to five weeks ago when we singled out this issue to focus our campaign on. We wanted to choose something that we could speak to as teens that would represent the struggles of our peers, and that issue was academic stress. At the time, we didn't know that eighty-three percent of teens identify school as a major stressor, or that since the pandemic, generalized anxiety disorder and major depressive disorder have increased in prevalence. We just knew that our group of a dozen students from all over Sacramento could identify this as a major problem in their own high schools.
We interviewed and surveyed over one hundred students all over Sacramento. We surveyed students on a five-point scale, five being the most, one being the least. The first question was how much school related to their stress. Eighty-five point five percent of students put a three or more. We asked students how often their schools addressed this issue. Seventy-six point four percent of students said three or less. Seventy-six point one, forty-one cited that the intense workload was the cause of their stress. Sixty-six point four percent said that their uncertainty of the future was the cause of their stress, and fifty-two point seven percent said that college admissions were the cause of their stress.
I also interviewed high schoolers in person and asked them how they felt about the support offered at school. Students say that allowing them extra time after school to complete, would help them complete more assignments and feel less stressed. Students also say talking to teachers and staff helped reduce stress, and providing support can help them feel more comfortable coming to them about their academic struggles and stress.
A study by Front Public Health Fund that generalized anxiety disorder and major depressive disorder have been more prevalent in students since the pandemic. The transition period for high school to college is additionally associated with sleep deprivation, eating disorders, and academic burnout. On top of all of that, college tuition in California is higher than ever, which means increased pressure for students to qualify for college scholarships.
We've made a PSA to help illustrate our solution to these problems.
Hey, Zola, you look stressed. Are you okay?
I don't know. I just, I can't ignore you too much. I haven't even been in two days in a while.
It's okay. Everyone feels stressed sometimes, and I understand. I try under a lot of pressure, but I'm always here for you. Need someone to talk to.
Yeah, I can't just do it. I never be pressured by my parents. I can get good grades. I went to.
I get you want to go for your parents, but you can always talk to teachers and staff for extra help so you don't feel so stressed out.
I feel like I can't handle this anymore. I feel tired.
Hi there. I'm a representative of the stress program. I know you guys are working very hard, look very stressed and tired. My program might give you the space and support you guys just might need. Our program has tutoring, study hall, and people who might be able to assist you. Our program also provides a wellness fair that you guys might be able to attend that provides even more benefits. Our after-school program helps provide youth with various benefits. We want this program to help provide an awareness of mental health issues with the youth. We hope that this program can evolve into something bigger for even more people. Stress, supporting teens with resources for educational stress together.
To elaborate more on our PSA, our organization stressed, or supporting teens with resources for educational stress together, would help students cope with their academic stress and help them feel supported together. Our program would offer an after-school, our organization would offer an after-school program where students would have access to peer groups, mental health support, college prep, school management guidance, tutoring, study hall, and a place to build relationships and de-stress. Additionally, stress would work with school representatives to help host wellness fairs every quarter slash semester lead. In addition, these wellness fairs would host representatives from local mental health organizations so students can hear from them in person. In the course of this program's success, we would like to look into incorporating our organization into the school day as I know you are probably wondering why our organization stressed would be a good solution. Some factors that people don't realize when creating resources for teens are that not all students have access to a safe and understanding space to talk about their feelings. Additionally, they may not have access to the internet to find online resources to help them. As my group chose the location for our services, we took these factors into account and decided we should hold our after-school program and bisemester wellness fairs at schools. This would be the most accessible location as going to school is already implemented into teens' everyday schedules. Stressed would provide all students with access to the resources they need to get as much help as possible.
To advertise stress, we have made a social media blast that provides an overview and description of our program. We will also create bookmarks and pamphlets, both in English and Spanish, so it's more accessible to the public. I have them placed in libraries around Sacramento and libraries, classrooms, and offices in schools that talk about the services we provide to students, along with our missions and goals, along with coping mechanisms for mental health and practicing mindfulness. We'll also have a banner that could be hung at schools that talks about what students have access to through our program because this program is for teens by teens.
We are requesting City Council to use Measure L to help fund our organization. Our organization stressed complies with seven sections and twenty subsections. The funding and resources will be used towards bringing to schools, awareness, partnerships, professionals, and college guidance. You can help provide connections which will help reach out to more people.
Thank you, City Council, for your attention, and feel free to ask us any questions.
Thank you so much. Let me, it's a great presentation. Over to Vice Mayor Maple.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Just want to congratulate you on a job well done. This is, it sounds like an excellent program that will show a lot of success. I think one of the things that I really appreciated is about how accessible you made this too, right? So, making sure that you have it in multiple languages so that people can access the information. And really, I think focusing on stress is a huge thing. People, they don't think about that enough, but it really has an impact on our, on our day-to-day lives and on our physical health, our mental health, and our well-being. So, I'm just really, really impressed and wanted to share my thanks and congratulations to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. I too also want to just echo Vice Mayor Maple and just want to say a great job. Really proud of all of you. I'm thirty-nine years old, and I still have dreams of being late to my high school and college classes. And so, that stress is real, right? And I, I just want to acknowledge, I think it's such an important topic because, especially after the pandemic, I'm not a young person anymore, though I like to believe I'm still young, but I have fifteen younger siblings, right? And so, I talk to them a lot. And what I can share is that, as I talk to with my siblings and young people, is that they're just facing a whole level of social conditions that we didn't face growing up. And I know for so many of the young people, it's not just school, but it's an increase in responsibilities, right? So, it's school and so much more. And so, having a peer system, support system, having safe spaces is so important. I also just want to say kudos for calling out the Sacramento Children's Fund as well, saying, hey, there's some funding set aside. This is also where possibly this program can be funded. So, just wanted to say, good job. Y'all did your research as well. And then, the other piece, because I really do like the program is, and a few of you mentioned doing it onsite, is also reaching out to nonprofits that are already working with the school district that have after-school programs onsite. I think that starting off with them and saying, hey, you should incorporate our model, right? I think they would be more than happy to do that. And so, just wanted to provide that advice. But really proud, congratulations, and very, very important topic. And I believe all of us, even right now, we're not like immune to stress, right? Especially us up here doing, doing work in the community, all of us, it's about learning how to find the right coping mechanism, but that also means making sure we have the right resource to know what we can do to deal with stress. So, great job. I'm really proud of each and every one of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you. I also still have those dreams sometimes, Councilmember Vang, so you're not alone. That's how I know I'm stressed. But I just want to commend you on this topic. You know, when I was in high school, remember I got these really bad stomach aches, and they took me to all these doctors, and they could never figure out anything wrong. And then, my mom was the one who realized like a year into this that I didn't get them in the summer, and she was like, uh-huh. Like, I think I know why your stomach hurts. But back then, we didn't have any tools. You know, it wasn't until I became an adult that I really understood how to recognize when I was getting stressed and the tools that I needed. So, for you to be starting this at the high school level is just really exciting. I hope that our EFC team will pass this along to the Measure L Commission, who I know is looking at funding priorities right now, because how cool would it be to have the tools when you're in high school? Could any of us imagine what that would have been like to have those tools in high school and how that would make you just a so much more successful young person and adult? So, I just want to, I mean, we have personal connections to all these topics, but I just, this is the first year I've heard this topic come up. And so, I just want to commend you on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ta?
Yeah, just to echo my members, you know, great job on the presentation, and stress was something that, you know, everyone goes through. But you said something tonight that was very important. You say a program for teens by teens, you know? And that is something that, as youth, you not only talk about the issue, but you went out and designed a program that you feel that would fit your needs and would fit your peers and solve, help solve issues in the community in regards to stress. And so, I wanted to commend you on a well-thought-out presentation. And yeah, definitely reach out to our offices, CBOs who works with teens, and you know, let's, let's work to get some of your ideas to practice. So, congratulations and great job.
Very good. Mayor Protem?
How'd you guys decide on Blue Jays as a team name?
So, at the beginning of the week of this program, we were assigned the Blue Team, and as a good starting point, that was our starting ground. We were the Blue Team. And so, following our naming, on the progress of naming, we decided to go with the Blue Jay as it was easy to off the tongue, easy to say, and it was a nice animal that we would name after, along with the Blue Team that was already established for us.
I want to ask, your recommendations are really sound because all of us, and I hope you benefit from our experience, have had this dream. It really is. It related to academic stress, about missing the final, about forgetting things. It's, but I want to ask you a different philosophical question. Do you, do you believe that schools should go to more of a pass/fail system of grading as opposed to, as opposed to As, Bs, Cs, Bs and Fs? In other words, is there any way around, really around the intense competition that young people feel when it comes to admission to college and, and that sort of thing? the intense competition that young people feel when it comes to admission to college and, and, and that sort of thing?
I believe that if we were to adjust that, it would have to rearrange the system as a whole and would have to go deep far back into the roots of the school system itself. However, it is, uh, the beginning step. It take the first step to at least, at the very bare minimum, allow for new generations to at least have a sort of change that allows them to come into the school system much better. So although we could say change the letter grade from A, B, C all the way down to Z, it wouldn't really affect it that much as it would just apply more numbers, more statistics to an already complicated system to a new generation who barely understands it. So at the very least, it would require every, at, at least a lot of people from the new generation to help guide the older generation to help a system where both of them can collaborate together and make the system just a slightly bit easier for everyone working within it.
Good answer. Good answer. Thank you. Thank you all. Great job. Good job. Great job. Blue Jays. Take our fourth group here, the Jade Dragons, prepared to talk about homelessness.
Good evening. Good evening, council. My name is Masal Mojadidi. I'm a rising junior at Natoma Specific Pathways Prep High School. I'm one of the peer mentors for the group Jade Dragons.
Good evening, City Council. My name, my name is Elaine Yang. I'm a rising senior at John F. Kennedy High School and a peer mentor for the Jade Dragons.
Hello, my name is Antonia Martinez and I'm a rising junior at Natoma Specific Pathways Prep.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Shriam Carthing. I'm a rising junior at Wessex Charter High School.
Hello, my name is Christine Shen and I'm a rising junior at Endurcom High School.
Hello, I'm Alexis Barrera and I'm a rising senior at McClatchy High School.
Hello, my name is Harsira Kindola and I'm a rising senior at Natoma Specific Pathways Prep.
Hello, my name is Sarah Roth and I'm a rising sophomore at John F. Kennedy High School.
Hello, my name is Chloe Tout and I'm a rising junior at Grant Union High School.
Hi, my name is Sophia and I'm a rising junior at Endurcom High School.
Hello, my name is Tala Mazhar and I'm a rising sophomore at Natoma Specific Pathways Prep.
Okay, so my team is here to discuss about homelessness, which has been prevalent in Sacramento since the nineteen eighties. For some background information, there are about five thousand five hundred people in Sacramento living without homes and about one thousand four hundred of them are chronically unhoused.
So the causes that lead to homelessness is that there's a lack of affordable housing for the unhoused. There's a lot of domestic violence, substance abuse, and poverty for the unhoused, as well as a lack of stability to maintain their lives and a lack of education for the unhoused.
Uh, so for research, we sent out a survey that would help us gauge people's knowledge on homelessness. And the following slides that you can see have our collected data. And for the first question that we asked respondents was, what is your age range? And with eighty-eight point one percent, um, this shows us that a lot of teenagers are familiar with the idea of homelessness as a whole, with those same teens being the future of our city. And a second question we had them respond to was, what amount of knowledge do you have regarding homelessness? And with fifty-seven point one percent, um, this tells us that a, a large amount of people's understanding regarding homelessness comes from things like social media and the news, showing us that homelessness as a whole is a very well-documented issue. And a third question we had them respond to was, do you think there are enough educational resources for the homeless? And with eighty-eight point one percent, this tells us that people do not believe the, that the homeless have access to enough educational resources, being under the assumption that there's just nobody out there to provide it for them.
So what's already been done is that there are programs that provide supply bags to unhoused people along with food, clothing, and shelter programs.
There are also one-on-one meetings that are available with resource coaches to help provide and support plans and goals and their next step in their, in life. Also, families are offered financial support and education.
Our proposal focuses on this crucial aspect by requesting the city to offer more educational programs which could take place at libraries, community centers, or even facilities. Firstly, we are requesting access to a diverse array of educational resources that can be taught by volunteers or city workers. This includes books, online courses, and various learning tools that will enable our unhoused community to engage in ongoing learning and independent skill development. By providing these resources, we hope you guys can bridge the gap and ensure that they have the tools necessary to access more opportunities.
Additionally, practical skills are essential for employability in daily living. Therefore, the program could include classes and workshops on basic literacy, numeracy, and financing. These skills are foundational and empower individuals to navigate their lives with greater confidence and capability. Beyond academic and practical skills, we wish to recognize the importance of mental health as well. We propose guided sessions on stress management, life skills, and personal empowerment to promote strength and wellness among unhoused individuals.
This is the flyer for the program and to the top you can see the logo, which is a heart and two hands holding each other. And to the left of this, you can see the name of the program, which is a helping hand. And the logo is also a prototype, but it's also related to the name of the program. And to the bottom of this, you can see our contact, the contact information for the program, which includes a website link, the email account, and the Instagram account. Our video encapsulates the idea that if we provide education to the unhoused, they can use that educational resources to find opportunities that can lead them to a stable lifestyle. Here's our video.
So, um, I'm part of this program that is helping out homeless people and educating them to get them back into the workforce. And I was, I was thinking if you want to be in our program?
Welcome to the program. Welcome to the program. Shriam, right?
Yeah.
It's good, it's good to see you here, man. Good morning, everyone. Our goal is to provide educational life skills needed to maintain a stable lifestyle. Please sign here. Congratulations, guys. You have made a lot of the program, man. How you guys doing? Hey, maybe you guys can come back and work like me. We'll see.
Hello.
Morning.
Hey. Hey.
Thank you for accepting me.
What's up, man?
Thank you.
Oh my God, real life is so good.
For real, for real, yeah.
Oh my God. Oh my God, it's you too. You know, I changed my life around like only two people. You guys should do that too. I think it speaks for itself. Come on.
As you can see, our video shows this by depicting an unhoused person joining our program and using the education and resources that we provide to lead a lifestyle that they want. Our hope is that every single person who joins our program will be able to get a job in the future.
So this is our billboard and on the top you can see our slogan, which is So Seed So All Can Succeed. And that basically means that we're planting a base so the unhoused can bloom. And underneath that is the website link as well as the email address. Moving on. So this is the prototype of our website, which will give information about hosted events, educational links and resources, as well as a contact page for anyone to give feedback to the city council. And this will be monitored by hard workers of the city council. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Should I go first, Mr.? I, I thought this was a great and aspirational project, um, to see everybody as a human being and to be willing to approach people and to try to help them. But here's a suggestion that I might have for you. And that is one of the things that we always try to do up here and anybody engaged in making or implementing public policy is to also recommend where the right connections are to make sure that we get the problem solved or make it better. So when this isn't, for example, I would suggest as a next step, we've got some of our expert city personnel, our housing director, our, uh, direct, our incident command structure director, Mr. Pedro. We've got the assistant city manager Mario Lara, who are working every day with a large team to try to actually help people find housing with the county to help find services. And so I think it is really important that you reach out to them, ask for a meeting, and see how you, we can link your effort to some of the things that are actually happening now on the ground. But here's the power of you. I don't know of another youth advocacy organization that is actually sort of on the ground doing what you're doing. It's mostly adults and, you know, doing the very best we can. How much more effective and powerful would the moral case to help people find it way off the streets and into housing and the services would it be with your voice and your organization helping to navigate people to get the help that they need? So I think you really have a great foundation here and it's really aspirational, but I, you always have to take constructive feedback as well. I want you to take it the next level if you can and at least meet with some of the people who are in charge here and figure out how your organization and advocacy, unique, coming from young people, can actually further your cause and our common cause. Fair? Okay. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I agree with our mayor. Uh, also something to think about because you guys have, have tackled, um, I think, a topic that we don't go a meeting without discussing. Probably daily in our council offices, we discuss all the time. And it's probably, what I find interesting in your write-up is you guys decided to tackle this because it's pervasive. I'm curious, are you guys talking about this at school? Is this a subject you talk about at school?
Yeah, especially in MP three, they do mention it in some like stories, like in the textbook sometimes is very talked about.
I'd like to add on to her. I mean, uh, it really depends on the school, if like you go around. Cause some schools, they might talk about it, some might not. We kind of, we also want to raise awareness about it because it's not like a small thing. It's a pretty big issue in our community and I feel like we should like look at it like, like it is a big issue.
So my, my request for you is look at this. Um, we have a Sacramento Youth Commission. Consider, you know, broaching our Sacramento Youth Commission and asking if this is a subject that they would like to take on as something they would want to have an impact on. Because I know one of their, their, their goals is, is trying to address mental health, safety as well. But I think it all folds in, um, because you're probably surprised that there are, um, unhoused students you go to school with and how can, can you guys help even at that level? But, uh, thank you for taking on such a heavy topic that, um, you know, maybe you guys get involved, you give us some better answers. Cause as adults, we're, I know all of us up here are willing to listen. You have a voice, you see it, you talk about it. What is it that we can do differently? So, but thank you for addressing this. This is heavy.
Councilmember Vang. Thank you, Councilwoman Kaplan.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Um, Councilwoman Kaplan is absolutely right. Homelessness and housing is probably the number one issue, um, in our city right now in this moment. I think we get calls all the time in our office regarding families that need housing, encampments, what's happening on the street. And so really appreciate you all taking on this heavy, uh, topic. In addition to, uh, the, um, feedback that the mayor and Councilwoman Kaplan provided, I just want to highlight a few things. I really appreciate that, um, when you started your presentation, you listed, here are some things that are already happening. I really appreciate that because that also mean that, you know, you, you delve in and you kind of wanted to kind of understand like, what are some of the programs that are already out there? And so really appreciate y'all just saying, hey, here's a, here's a problem, here's our solution. But kind of looking at what's already been done, what's, you know, what needs to be improved. And so I just want to say great job, uh, for that. I think, when I think about our unhoused neighbors, it's just so hard to, our system right now is not set up in a way to, to really navigate it easily, right? And I think just listening to your presentation, uh, really reaffirm what, what we also knew already too. And I, um, also want to just appreciate, uh, the thought of, uh, really focusing on like basic necessity of like workforce training and getting folks who are unhoused to be in program and then having them, you know, seeing their success and having them come back to share their stories, right? Making sure that it's really community-based up. And so, um, all really great models, um, and just really just want to say great job. This is a heavy topic, but y'all, y'all did really, really great and you should be proud of yourself.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, very hard topic. So thank you for taking it on. You know, I will amend the mayor's statement that there is actually a lot of youth that are working on this issue through the Transitional Age Youth Collaborative locally. Something that we're seeing arise in our county and many counties are young people, um, becoming homeless themselves. And actually, I think the statistic was that like two-thirds of chronically unhoused adults first lost their housing as a young person. So when you think about what to do with this work moving forward, I mean, these are folks who go to your schools. These are people that you probably know, um, that you've seen, that you might not know that they've lost their housing, but you probably would recognize them from your school and think about, you know, what would it look like for you to take what you've learned now and to really help provide those resources and advocate for your fellow students. You know, if you ask your district, every single one of them has the numbers of how many kids you go to school with that are experiencing homelessness. And, and so it's a real opportunity, I think, with this knowledge and these ideas that you have to advocate also within your schools and within your districts to say, hey, can we do this for the students who are here now? Who probably, we want to interrupt as we were talking about like moving upstream, we want to interrupt this as early as possible. And a lot of times that means starting when someone's under eighteen and starting to struggle because are their families starting to struggle and they're starting to get on this path that gets harder and harder for them to get off of the older that they get. So, um, just more food for thought, but definitely want to appreciate you for taking on a pretty heavy, pretty heavy topic. And, um, hope you stay engaged on, on this work, um, because it will continue through college. We know there's a lot of college kids who struggle with homelessness. You see articles every day about, you know, we're setting up safe camping, like car parking areas for kids who are sleeping in their cars on college campuses. And how crazy is that, right? And so I think there's a lot of opportunities we have to maybe use this experience and think about, like the mayor said, what does this mean now? And, and how can we plug in now to try to help, you know, the young people like you who are, are starting on that path?
Really important cause. Please stay with it. We need you. We really need you. Rick Jennings, Councilman.
Just a final comment to add on to what my colleagues have already said. You know, in this presentation, I definitely felt your heart. I mean, in everything that you did and everything that you said, from the sowing seeds so that all can succeed to the Helping Hands logo, which invites people in and doesn't reject them and send them away, the logo itself is just so inviting. To being a helping hand to others, to make sure that it's our obligation to help others. So I felt your heart. I just want to let you know that because that means a lot to me. Not only you're, you're trying to address the issue of homelessness, right? But your heart is in it, not just the work. So now with the heart and the work together, you can make a change. You can, you can be the change that you want to see. You have total control. And so whether it's in your schools or in the communities or the areas that you live, you know, keep doing what you're doing. Let's see if you can take this to another level. And I just really encourage you, we're here to help you in any way we can. We want to be a part of your team. Good job.
Any last comments? Great job. Congratulations, you guys. Five, the Pink. Five, the Pink Panthers, back to mental health, mental health resources, affordability, and accessibility. The Pink Panthers.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Jamie Villas-Valle. I'm a junior in the Thomas Pacific Pathways Prep, and I am one of the Link Crew leaders for our team.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Liliana De La Rosa. I'm a rising senior at OS Campus High School, and I'm, and I'm also a peer mentor for our Link Crew.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Isaiah Nathaniel, and I'm a rising junior at Rosemont High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Alan Cruz Morales, and I am a rising sophomore at West Campus High School.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sammy Wing, and I'm an upcoming sophomore for West Campus High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Amanda Kwong, and I'm a sophomore at Christian Brothers High School.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Billy Negrete, and I'm an upcoming sophomore at Rosemont High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Heaven Franklin, and I'm an upcoming junior at Rosemont High School.
Good evening, Council. My name's Darmy Singuretti, and I'm a rising sophomore in the Thomas Pacific Pathways Prep High School.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tanya Godia, and I'm a rising sophomore in the Thomas Pacific Pathways Prep High School.
Today, we will address the important issue of mental health, and the solutions that are crucial for the well-being and future of our youth. Without further ado, let's dive deeper into our presentation. A big issue in Sacramento is the lack of mental health issues, especially for our youth. Mental health issues have been increasing over the years in Sacramento, making it the fourth highest city with mental health issues in California.
Here's our PSA. Now we'd like to present to you our PSA, which shows the struggle of getting help for mental health.
I've been seeing a close friend story, what's on?
It's fine, it's nothing, you don't, it's nothing to worry about.
Yeah, the app gives you like a little resource thing, post stuff like that, right?
Nobody even listens to those.
Well, yeah, but have you tried seeing a counselor?
All they're gonna do is tell my parents.
Well, it's at least where the shot, try it.
As you can see here, you're filling two classes. Hey, the talking that you want to hear, or whatever it is, it's back in wait, right now? You need to focus on your girls.
Go good with the counselor?
No, all they did was lecture me about my grades.
Uh, well, you could always try those, like, websites, outline stuff.
All they do is just reply.
Well, I mean, you can at least try it when you need it.
Well, I guess it worked, but it's not gonna be permanent.
Well, it's just something in the meantime, while we try and find you help somewhere else.
The struggling student depicted in this video represents the many students that struggle with mental health issues that often get overlooked. This character illustrates the silent battles many youth face daily.
The ineffective counselor shows how students frequently feel unheard by their support systems. The scene underscores the need for more empathetic and effective mental health support in schools. The suicide attempt emphasizes the severity of mental health crisis. This traumatic moment serves to raise awareness about real and urgent dangers of untreated mental health issues. The supportive friend highlights the importance of talking to peers and having relatable support. It demonstrates how peer support can actually, can be a crucial lifeline, showing the power of friendship and understanding in crisis situations.
Mental health care in the US is often prohibitively expensive, leading to many individuals not receiving the necessary treatment. These key statistics highlight the financial and access barriers. To start, in 2021, only 47.2% of US adults with any mental, mental illness received treatment. Also among them, US youth aged 6 to 17 with a mental health disorder, only 50.6% received treatment. Nearly half of those with serious mental illness stated that the cost of treatment was a major reason for not receiving the care that they need.
The survey data reveals that while many youth in Sacramento rate their mental health as good or average, there are still notable concerns. Many find it hard to discuss feelings and perceive school counselors as though only somewhat helpful. Significant barriers like cost and transportation prevent many from seeking professional help. Most survey respondents believe that there is a mental health crisis in Sacramento, highlighting the need for expanded access, increased awareness, improved support, and reduced barriers.
One of our solutions is a mental health community club that will be held in community centers around Sacramento. We would like to organize workshops that focus on stress management, mindfulness, and coping strategies. These workshops can be conducted by school counselors or previously trained students from our peer support program. We would like the city council to collaborate with local health departments to provide these workshops to the broader community.
We also plan to offer peer support programs in schools where trained students can offer support to their peers. Schools can partner with local mental health professionals to train peer supporters. Having this opportunity open for students who struggle with their mental health can help reduce the judgment associated with seeking help, and provide initial support, support for those in need.
For implementation, we plan to start by fundraising, in order to raise the necessary money to get our community's club on its feet. Similarly, we would like to use Measure L funding to our advantage, and take the funds that we would receive from it to maintain and support our community club.
Using Measure L funding, we plan to achieve this goal. Funding will go to training peers to be able to help and support their youth, peer to peer. Furthermore, we believe advocacy is most important to raise public awareness. To do this, we plan to distribute and produce flyers that can be displayed at local bus stops, shops, and stalls. Libraries and community centers can be used as youth workshops to help advocate for our goal.
Our billboard captures the essence of our initiative with a bold and clear message, "Mental Health Matters." The design features an illustration of a brain with flowers growing from it. This represents the growth and positivity that we gain through mental health support.
The eye-catching pink text emphasizes the importance of mental health, and the call to action invites viewers to visit our free community club, where we offer peer support programs and mental health workshops. This visual representation aims to raise awareness and encourage the community to join our efforts in providing better mental health support for our youth.
In conclusion, youth mental health is important because it affects relationships, daily life, and your future. Poor mental health results in negative outcomes, and such as academic struggles, social isolation, and increased risk of substance abuse or self-harm. This is why we need your help to turn the negatives into positives with better mental health for youth in our community. Our call to action is for all you to help us enforce these mental health workshops in our community. Thank you for listening.
Did you? Yeah, go on, go.
Yeah, thank you. It's okay. Mute, unmute. Thank you so much for the presentation and the video. I really want to commend you on the recommendation for peer counseling. Like, that's a pretty progressive thing to be doing, and I think to have students trained on how to recognize and assist other peers. And my dad was a veteran, and he was a big believer in veterans talking to veterans, right? Like, they understand the experience, they should be talking to them. And you, I mean, I can't, I mean, I wasn't in high school during COVID, I wasn't even really in high school during social media, right? And so, to like, have somebody who's actually experiencing what your experience, be able to talk to you, is a really cool strategy that you've identified. And so, again, really hope that our EFC team passes this along to our Measure L Commission, as they're making their strategic plan, because that would be a really great pilot project, to train some young people to do that counseling themselves, and to refer. And also, if a counselor ever treats you like they did in that video, I really hope that you report them to somebody, because that is not okay, and I hope that's not based on real experiences with adults at your school. But I definitely just hope that you pursue that idea with the Measure L Commission, we have resources, and like, talk about a really cool upstream intervention we could be doing to make sure people are on campus who can talk to, to students, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to echo Councilwoman Valenzuela, and just say, great job, great presentation. I, similar to her comments, I was also gonna say, really love the program, very similar to what Councilwoman Tao shared about how this program is really for youth by youth, and I think that's really, really awesome. I too would make the recommendation to share your information with our commissioners on the Measure L Oversight Committee. But I, one thing I want to talk about, is your billboard. I just, I love it. If you can go back and pull, I see Coach nodding his head too, so he might have some comments, but I just love it, because it's like, it's just, it's really, really beautiful. I love it, because it's like, mental health, you're thinking about physical health, but it's also outside of that. It's like, you know, when you have conversation about health, it's also about, like, like, things that can bloom from your stress, right? And so I just, I love it, it's beautiful, it's simple, it's not chaotic. Really love the artwork and the branding, so great job. Another mental health group as well, but really, I'm really excited to, to actually see more youth group talking about this, because this is my fourth year listening to presentation, and similar to what the mayor mentioned earlier, haven't really seen this been the focus, but it's really great to see that, there's two groups focusing on this, so, great job, I've been really proud of y'all.
Thank you. I just, so, there's a law that was passed in, I believe, 2020, might have been 2021, that allows counties to certify peers as mental health counselors, and to pay them, and to pay them. And so, one suggestion is that you should talk to your county representatives, your supervisors, and the staff about starting a pilot program in Sacramento County that would certify high school students as peers. I don't think it exists, it might, and I, if I'm, and if I'm wrong, I hope I'm wrong, and that I'm, get corrected, but to certify high school students in Sacramento County as peers, they would draw down a lot of federal money, and by putting up some money themselves, our county could lead, in the state and in the country, in making, giving teenagers jobs, training you and your, and your peers in, in a career pathway that, where there is tremendous need, and obviously, serve your fellow students who need that outreach. This is really powerful, and again, just like with the other group, I just want to suggest that you take it to the next level, because there's a real opportunity here. Congratulations. Not last words, but... You guys are great, thank you, great job. Everybody's done a great job, by the way, everybody. We now move to our sixth group, and this is Cultural Awareness in Sacramento. The group's name is Club Include. Love it.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Nadeline Carthen, and I'm a senior at the Thomas High School. I'm also one of our peer mentors for our group, Club Include.
My name is Meredith Gore. I'm a rising senior at Highlands High School, and I'm also a club, oh, sorry, I'm also a peer mentor for Club Include.
My name is Hussein Almazmawi, and I'm a rising sophomore at Valley High.
Hello, my name is Alexander Kalsamov, I attend Intercom High School, I'm a rising junior.
My name's Tommy White, I'm a rising junior at the Thomas High School.
Good evening, Council. My name is Arhan Sharma, and I am a rising senior in New Technology High School.
Hello, City Council. My name is Lex Sherma, and I'm a rising sophomore at MP3 High School.
Hello, City Council. My name is Shia Dijonette, and I'm an upcoming junior at Rosemont High School.
Hello, City Council. My name is Tiana Washington, I go to Rosemont High School, and I'm upcoming junior.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Kearns, I'm an upcoming sophomore, and I go to the Thomas High School.
Hello, my name is Sapir Cohen, and I'm a rising junior at Rosemont High School.
Throughout history, there have been months and holidays to recognize and honor different cultures. Two examples are Black History Month in February, and Hanukkah, a Jewish festival in December. Even though there are months and holidays, there are still people today who aren't aware of cultural festivals. Sacramento has celebrated Mexican Independence Day, and had an upward movement to promote Asian culture, as well as many parks in the Thomas.
The issue we will be touching down on is, is how in Sacramento, many residents living here experience a lack of recognition for their cultural identities, misidentification, and racism. Many residents experience frustration with their cultures being misunderstood, misrepresented, ignored, and overlooked. While many endure it, it leads to resentment, isolation, and marginalization. Not only that, but the lack of cultural awareness leads to harmful stereotypes, systemic bias, and social divides. This makes it hard for minorities to thrive. When people's cultural identity is not recognized or put down, they may feel disconnected, which leads them from distancing themselves from their community.
Sacramento is one of the most diverse cities in the United States, with a population of 528,000 people. Over 70% of people, of the residents are people of color. That's the actual breakdown on the slides. And recently, there's been an upward movement to get rid of the issue of misidentification in Sacramento, but still not enough, as people are still facing problems. The Office of Diversity and Equity has a really low workforce, even though the cities, there's a lot of people of color in Sacramento, and that's a huge issue. The schools also only talk about cultures that impacted the country in the past, not the ones that impact the country today as well. We also put out a survey which received 110 responses. Of those, 65.5% of people said that they feel like their race has been misidentified, and 77.3% have felt like they've experienced racism as well. People lacking cultural awareness can bring negative emotions to the community, and this is a huge issue.
Our solution is establishing a club that will be dedicated to celebrating all cultures in Sacramento. We plan to setting up booths around downtown, dedicated to various cultures, where the residents of Sacramento can experience and learn about traditions of their various cultures, and also can listen to guest speakers from various cultural backgrounds, that would bring their personal stories about lack of awareness of cultures.
This is our billboard. We plan to show our billboard, which we have titled, "Embracing Culture, Building Unity." All the people shown represent unity among all people of all cultures. We plan to show our billboard to send a message of unawareness to cultures, to everyone in Sacramento.
We, we are sharing with you our flyer for cultural awareness. As you can see, we have diversity on our flyer, and the message we are sending out is, we trying to, we want every race to be accepted to attend this event, so they can learn about each other, cultures, and discuss challenges and the daily issues that they experience.
Yeah, it's part of the team.
What do you mean by that?
Like, Pakistanis aren't even good at soccer.
I'm not Pakistani, I'm Indian.
That's the same thing.
I'm done with you. I don't know if I'm being overdramatic, but what Usain said really hurt me. I kind of feel corny being this upset about it, but it's whatever.
Cultural awareness? Seems interesting.
Yeah, I'm Indian, my name's Lex.
Nice to meet you. I was the one.
What is really nice?
Welcome to our group. So, why did you want to come?
Recently, a friend reminded me of racist comments to me, and I felt like my culture wasn't understood. And I saw a flyer after this meeting, so, but I didn't want to come, because I felt like it was corny, but after coming here, I feel like I'm being understood.
Well, a lot of us can relate to what you did through, and which is why we're here, so, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know, should I drop him or not?
I don't think you should drop him, it just sounds like your friend is lacking cultural awareness, which is not his fault, because a lot of schools, they don't teach about cultural awareness, but here, we're able to learn about it.
How's soccer?
It's good, you should try out.
Now that you see Pakistanis on the team?
No, Pakistanis and Indians are two different things, and you should know the difference by now.
Whatever, bro. I didn't mean what I said, I'm sorry.
Well, if you're actually sorry, then you should come to the cultural awareness meeting with me.
Alright.
So, our PSA shows how some people can be culturally ignorant, but some... So, our PSA shows how some people can be culturally ignorant, but sometimes it's not their fault, and we can help them get educated with activities such as our club.
Today, I get the opportunity to share my personal story with you, which I'm so grateful for and very passionate about because it's why I chose the topic of cultural awareness for my group. I'm a first generation American with my father being from Israel, and it is no secret that Jews are often stereotyped with misconceptions here in America. Once, my father warned me, telling me that no one in America likes Jews, but no one would tell me this because I'm a socially acceptable Jew. I thought he was crazy until I realized I don't walk around with his accent and I'm not the one being asked, "So where are you from?" He always answers this question with that he's from the earth. When I was little, I thought that response was him being his silly hippie self, until I got older and realized how many bad reactions it must have took to no longer share the real answer. I know this because I received the same bad reactions after I'm asked what my ethnicity is. Not what I stand for or what I believe in, but simply I met with a sour face only because where I am from. Things like this made me feel extremely segregated and like I didn't belong. That's why I proposed cultural awareness to my group, and ever since then, I have felt heard and accepted from the wonderful people standing behind me. So, City Council, if you have any doubt in our cultural awareness therapy groups working, know that I am proof that they do work, and it's made me brave enough to come up here and share my story with you.
So, in conclusion, our presentation demonstrates how basic socializing and gathering of people at cultural school clubs and gathering, and special events could be crucial for the youth to be educated on accepting other various cultures. Thank you.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
Oh, we're asking you.
You're over questions. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let me, I'm sorry. I thought you had more, more to say, but let me turn it over to my colleagues here, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Awesome. Well, excellent presentation, and thank you for sharing your story. I know how scary that can be in even a small setting, and this is not a small setting, so good for you for doing that. I really want to thank you for this. And I wanted to make sure you were aware, there's this really cool event that happens in my district in October called the Golden Harvest Festival, and part of the goal is to bring all different cultural communities across Sacramento together for a parade. There's dancing, there's booths, there's information tables, and so it might be a near-term opportunity for you if you're interested in taking that tabling on the road and making it real. Happy, our office would be happy to connect you with them. It's in October, on the 26th, and it's a Saturday for school, but it's a really cool, I mean, honestly, that parade, like, I lost count of how many different cultural groups were in that parade, dancing, or singing, or performing, and so that could be a good opportunity near term to, to be included and to try out your curriculum on some real-life people.
Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. I, one, just wanted to say congratulations. Great presentation, and thank you so much for sharing your story with us. This is such an important topic, not just for young people, but for all residents in Sacramento, right? We are an incredibly diverse community, but we can also be very kind of siloed in our own, in our own spaces and not open to learning about other people's cultures and histories. And I, I share this because the city of Sacramento right now, as Mayor and I are co-chair of the Racial Equity Committee, we're embarking on this journey to develop a racial equity resolution so that it can help guide the city in terms of how we govern. And a big part of that is acknowledging the harm that has been done in the city to minorities and folks of color and women. And so, I would love to add to your presentation and would encourage you all, because your voice is so important. There are going to be three listening sessions, actually, in August, to hear the residents about where, you know, issues in the community, cultural awareness, everything, racism, everything that's happening in the city. It's going to be so important to make sure that young people, all of y'all, are there to like really share your lived experiences. And so, just wanted to put a plug for that, because what you're advocating for is what, I believe, the city, what we're trying to also do citywide. And so I just wanted to, to put a plug in for that. We'll make sure that information gets to you, but I would love for all of y'all to be there, because usually when there's town halls that happen, it's just like adults in the space, right? And really, it's so important to make sure that all of you are there to share about what is it like to be a, a young woman living in the city, right? Your own ethnicity. I think that's really important for other folks to understand that, and so would really encourage y'all to, to go to that. I'll make sure that we send that over to Sarah to send it to all of you. But great job, and really proud of you taking on this topic. So, great job.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Job well done. That's a brave topic to conquer. Not many people want to talk about it, even though you probably experience almost in your daily lives, and you really just want to be seen as you, as a human, not what your culture and your, your background may identify you of or what people perceive. One of the things that I have done, because having been a school board member for 20 years in Natomas Unified, it was, it's the most diverse district in the state of California, second in the United States. And it is so important that when we understand our differences, we realize our differences, we're actually more alike, and they tend to fade when we see each other as human beings. So as a council member, I've created like a Celebrate Natomas series where we celebrate our different ethnicities and cultures. My last one is on August 2nd, so not only you, but I invite everybody. I will send this information to Sarah, but if you guys would like a free booth to bring your, your idea, you are more than welcome. It is, August is AAPI month, but it is welcome for everybody because I want to invite the community so that when we understand and see and know different cultures, we start seeing ourselves as human beings, and we're all better when we work together. So, job well done on addressing a, a difficult issue that I know each one of you have experienced, but again, I'll send that your way, Sarah, if you want to share it on, but thank you. Job well done.
Thank you.
I'm curious whether or not the existing clubs at your schools are act, are what your experience have been with them, and whether or not, for example, when there's a terrible incident like what we read about or heard about at Luther Burbank High School a couple of weeks ago, whether or not students from different racial or ethnic backgrounds rally around each other, whether there is the kind of support that your project calls for. What, what's the current state of the way it is when something bad happens to one, one of our diversity elements? Do they get support from others?
Well, it depends what school you're going to, but I know that my school does not offer support for things like this, and I don't see it in my community, and that's why I brought it up here today.
Yeah, my school either, I don't see it either in there.
Okay. What's that? We have to do better. Well, that's why your call to action is so important here, because we have to do better. I mean, this is always the question in our community during painful times among the adults, right? When something bad happens to one of us, do we support each other? And I'd say that in this city, I think we have mostly a very good history of standing with and for each other. I think in these modern times, it's, the stresses have become really pronounced and significant, but it just means we need to try even harder. And so, when something like that happens at Luther Burbank High School, I would hope that we, we work to get to a place where non-African-American students are the first ones who are speaking out and standing up, right? Because it's, it's standing up for each other, not just for ourselves, whatever our particular diversity element is. So what do we do? Well, you, you have, you've put forward a, a very good proposal. Boy, we could talk about this one for a long time, and maybe we need, and maybe we need to continue it. That's how important this is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we now have another mental health topic, but this time, it's extracurricular effect on students, student mental health. Positive or negative?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Rollewa Ayawade. I'm a rising senior at Sutter Peak, and I'm the peer mentor for the Golden Leaves.
Hello, my name is Mackay Lender, and I'm a rising senior at New Technology High School.
Hello, my name is Kabir Barkse, and I'm an upcoming junior at John F. Kennedy High School.
Good evening, Council. I am Malik Shim, and I'm also a rising junior at John F. Kennedy High School.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Jazia Miles. I am an incoming sophomore at Oak Ridge High School.
Hello, Council. My name is Morgan Flornoy, and I'm a rising sophomore at Natomas Specific Pathways Prep High School.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sophie Liu, and I'm a rising sophomore at West Campus High School.
Hello, City Council. My name is Maryam Papal, and I'm a rising junior at Forhill High School.
Hello, City Council. My name is Tanya Elias, and I'm a rising sophomore at Intercom High School.
Good evening, City Council. Today, we stand before you to bring forward a very important topic to your attention, the positive impacts of extracurriculars on youth mental health. Over the past few weeks, we have conducted research, collected survey data, as well as brainstormed ideas on how the youth can become more involved in creating programs run by themselves, for themselves, as well as how they can become more involved in programs already facilitated by the city, such as Start or ACES.
We aim to raise awareness among students in Sacramento about the importance of participating in extracurricular activities outside of school. We also encourage the Council to create more after-school programs for youth that caters to youth interests. Engaging in these activities at a young age geared towards elementary and middle school students supports their mental well-being, fosters community interaction, and enhances their problem-solving skills. It's crucial for youth to interact with others because we often overlook the importance of face-to-face interactions with others, as they often either go straight home after school or spend excessive time online.
Our recommendation to the City Council is to designate more Measure L funding to youth after-school programs, because when the city invests more in these programs, there will see mentally well youth who can contribute more to their communities in the future.
Our team would like the city to shift more focus to producing new after-school programs for the youth. These can include our program, where students can showcase their art, possibly keep them hanging out at community centers. Also, a homework club with volunteer tutors such as high schoolers, helping children learn more. The youth would also appreciate a coding club by using computers at community centers or being provided for computers, or even a game club where youth can play video games, card games, and board games with their friends together. The youth of Sacramento want and need more places for the youth to build more opportunities safely and happily in their community.
We'd like the council members to advocate for the programs being put in place by sending out monthly emails to their districts, mentioning youth after-school opportunities in the area so the youth of Sacramento can see what they can attend. And additionally, districts can also host an opportunity fair, where different youth after-school activities and programs are showcased and shared so kids can see what interests them in what they want to do.
When the youth of Sacramento participate in an after-school program, they will have improved development of emotional and social, social skills, as well as having something productive to do after school that can positively impact their future. Most importantly, being an after-school program will vastly improve their mental state and prevent them from experiencing depression and anxiety.
We surveyed 103 students total on the effects of positive impact on their mental health of people that participated in these extracurriculars. 78.6% said they did, they did have a positive impact on their mental health, and 19.4% said they don't participate in any after-school programs whatsoever, and only 1.9% think it didn't have a positive impact on their mental health. Bless you, bless you. This show, this shows how important extracurriculars are, because when the majority of them saying they have a positive impact on their mental health, I believe that this could benefit students greatly because when we have these programs, it gives these kids somewhere to be at, it gives them social skills, it gets them to be out there. And with these benefits students had, we plan to expand this greatly.
Based on the data from our survey, about 50.5% of our survey participants engage in some form of after-school activity, while about 49.5% do not. Those who are not involved in any after-school activities are missing out on the benefits and opportunities those programs can provide, such as getting to learn new things, getting to be around people and kids their age, and also, of course, just getting to have fun.
The upcoming video, the upcoming video shows one of our main topics, awareness.
Are you doing alright?
No, I'm a little too bored. I think they're doing a pretty good, right?
Really, man? You just, like, not doing it alright now?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, uh...
Yo, I have an idea. Yo, I noticed an after-school club with, I did soccer.
What, soccer?
Yeah, I did an after-school club that, uh, soccer, it used to be to more people in it.
I love soccer. I mean, I mean...
Yeah.
What's wrong with this club? It's so depressing.
Yeah, it's kind of sad, but we can make it better. We can make it better, yeah? Don't you think?
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to raise awareness today. Help each other all more, you know?
You, why, you're right. We could definitely, like, at least like set flyers or like something making that school program better.
Yeah.
Because this is a dodgeball.
This, this is, this is great. This is a great idea.
The video soon went viral, getting thousands of views and allowing many more people to see the club. So you see, extracurricular activities are extra for a reason. They provide a space for a community of students, keep students from being lonely at home, and gives them a supportive space. Soccer clubs aren't the only after-school programs that exist. Programs such as Start, ACES, Chance for Life are extremely helpful and beneficial for our youth, and we believe the need to provide more funding and awareness on after-school programs that will keep our students engaged in the community. So, as you can see in the video, it shows on how important is awareness to us, because awareness is crucial, because what is the point of having dozens of amazing after-school programs but if no one knows about it? So that's why your awareness is crucial for us, so then students can find the right clubs for them.
Our billboard ad aims to highlight the significance of extracurricular activities on mental health. As our slogan states, extracurriculars are extra for a reason, these activities offer more than just fun. They provide essential opportunities for personal growth, stress relief, and social connection, all of which contribute positively to mental well-being.
This is our flyer. It demonstrates exactly why the youth should develop their own clubs or programs and how they would benefit from doing so. The flyer also has a short description of what Measure L is, how clubs or programs would benefit from it, and how could they possibly access this resource. On the bottom right is a QR code that anyone can scan for more information on Measure L, and on the bottom left located is our Instagram page should anyone need to contact us.
With that, thank you for your time and attention this evening, Council. Please feel free to ask any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Excellent job. Really important topic, and I just had one suggestion as well. So what a lot of folks don't know is there's actually, our governor Gavin Newsom, one of his top priorities is including what he calls Expanded Learning Opportunity Funds in the state budget. So he put, there's $4 billion in the state budget every single year that goes specifically to what they call Expanded Learning Opportunities, and that's things like after-school, summer school, anything outside of the classroom, essentially, and so that includes sports. A lot of the programs that you mentioned, and the, and the thing that we've, we've noticed in recent years is that the school districts actually are sometimes unaware that those funds are available, and so there's still a lot of money sitting in the budget to fund programs. And so, one thing that I can think of that'd be a really cool addition to this would be to educate your school board members and your school districts about that funding and make sure that they know that it's there so that these programs can be funded through that as well. So, just wanted to throw that out as a suggestion and say, wonderful job. I love the flyer. I love the billboard, and I think this is really important. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thank you, Mayor. I too also just want to take this moment to say, great job, great presentation, and... And as our young folks are going through this presentation, I'm like, hey, we're doing something similar in the city of Sacramento. So I want to put a quick plug in because I think I've heard three groups talk about Measure L, the Sacramento Children's Fund, and just want to let you know that tomorrow at Colono Heights Library is going to be a Measure L Town Hall Children's Fund meeting. And so just really want to encourage our young people because every time I go to Town Hall, I always see adults, right? And it's just so important to have our youth there because this funding in particular is for our young people. And so you all have really good ideas. I think these ideas come from our youth, but your voice is so important. So I just wanted to put a plug in for that because absolutely 100% behind y'all that we need to really support our after-school programs. They're extra for a reason because we know it's needed. But it's so important to make sure that young people are at the forefront saying that so they can hear directly from you. So just wanted to put that plug in. And great job on your presentation.
Great job. Councilmember Ta.
Yeah, just to piggyback off Councilmember Vang, this Saturday, there's also a Measure L meeting in my district at the Hagewood Library at 4:00 PM. So definitely, you know, show up to learn about the Children's Fund and how we can advocate to get that to impact our communities. And so I think that's something that's really important that tonight, we're discussing youth programmings and youth presentations, but also the Measure L Commission is also hosting a lot of community meetings this week as well, too.
Councilmember Kaplan.
I just want to piggyback on that because my commissioner on the Measure L Commission is joining his commissioner for that community meeting. So when you think, oh, gosh, I don't live in that area, it's actually important for you guys to show up with your student voice. I think there is not anybody on this council that doesn't wish we heard more of your voices. I can tell you, this is my favorite night because I get so much information and ideas from each group that comes up and presents to us. So know that your voice is extremely powerful and that, you know, you should go advocate. Each one of you, find out which school district you're in, even if you belong to a charter. Charters have boards. But go to your district and advocate for what you want and show up at Measure L if you can because what you're doing is very important and your voice matters. Thank you.
So here's a philosophical and practical question for you to think about. Measure L, which has come up a number of times, generates between eight and 12 million dollars a year, depending upon the year. And one of the things I know Councilmember Vang and I and others have talked about is, and your voice is really important, should the money be spread out among a variety of really important and worthy programs and maybe even categories and causes? Or should we, first, the Youth Advisory Commission, and ultimately, the City Council, choose one or two things that, where we could put more money into those one or two things? And it's something we confront all the time when it comes to budgets and public financing. And there's not a right or wrong answer, by the way. But we could use your guidance on that question because maybe there are certain types of extracurricular activities that aren't getting nearly enough funding and attention where you would say, if it's Measure L, you should put 50% of that categorized money into a particular kind of program. I'm not saying you have to, but it's something to be thinking about, right? Because the tendency is to, yeah, try to spread it wide. Well, that may help a lot of programs a little, but will it really have a major impact? Not right or wrong, something to think about. Thank you. Class dismissed. Last, but not least, "The Connection of Drug Abuse and Teenage Mental Health", by The Flight Crew.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Hanya Faridi. I am a rising junior at Natoma Specific Pathways Prep High, and I am one of the link crew leaders slash peer mentors for my group, Flight Crew.
Good evening, Council. My name is Gregory Walls. I'm a rising junior at Natoma Specific Pathways Prep, and I'm another one of the peer mentors for my group, The Flight Crew.
Hello, my name is Kamel Weeks, and I'm a rising sophomore at the Met High School.
My name is Michael Storga, and I am a rising junior at Natomas High.
Hello, Council. My name's Teddy Bogden. I'm a rising sophomore at CK McClatchy.
Hello, Council. My name is Dylan Yeet, and I'm a rising junior at Jesuit High School.
Hello, Council. My name is Neethi Sista, and I am a rising senior at Andrum High School.
Hello, my name's Emily Liu. I'm a rising junior at CK McClatchy.
Hello, my name is Haley Fowler, and I'm a rising senior at Yamoja International Academy.
Hello, my name is Chancy, and I'm a rising junior at John F. Kennedy High School.
Hello, City Council. My name is Sarthak Sharma, and I'm a rising sophomore at Natoma Specific Pathways Prep.
Good evening, Council. Today, our team has decided to focus on one of Sacramento's most major issues, the teen mental health and drug crisis.
I and the rest of my team have seen a lot of you, a lot of high school and middle school students at our schools vaping and doing drugs. Simply informing a school staff member isn't making any real change or improvements. The youth's mental health crisis directly increases the usage of drugs and vapes amongst Sacramento teens.
For our statistics, we created a survey to collect data from teens in our community. Our data shows 64.1% of our users reported using drugs. That is more than half. Of those, 34.2% do not have resources to help themselves. Eighty-seven percent said they know someone who has used drugs before or currently. Eighty-four point eight percent said they are aware of some of the impact of drugs on the human body. Our focus is to bring full awareness and education about the impact of drugs on teens' mental health.
As you all know about Measure L, which has recently been passed, it includes a variety of youth services, including mental health wellness and counseling services, as well as substance abuse prevention, as well as treatment, which are all funded. And below on the screen are three examples of the 35-plus organizations and other programs available in Sacramento that are all dedicated to these youth services. So based on this information, clearly, the number of resources available in Sacramento for our youth isn't the issue here. So why is the teen mental health and drug crisis still so prevalent?
A student from Andrum High School pretty sums, pretty much sums up the reason for this prevalency. Sacramento has a lot of resources for the youth drug abuse and mental health crisis, but no awareness or education about them.
Our billboard shows the different choices people have when dealing with drugs. The good way, on the right, shows how life without drugs can lead to a happy and healthy future. The bad way shows how drugs causes many health problems.
We will now present our PSA.
Things were so wrong. My mom argued with me for every little thing. All my friends are leaving me for other people, and I don't know why. Well, how can you discuss your issues with your mom? Like, ask her what she wants you to improve or how you can become closer? She says it's because I don't talk to enough people. I don't spend time with my friends and peers. But how am I supposed to do that if I can't deal with my own problems?
I think maybe you can tell your mom about how you have your own problems going on and maybe even ask her for help.
I guess that'd be the best thing to do.
Romi, Sarthak, your family's here to help you. They only want the best for you.
Yeah, that's me.
You have the money?
Yeah. Is it safe?
Why does it matter if it's safe? I came all the way out here. You're gonna buy something.
I don't know. I have a bad feeling about this.
Your friend said you want to get better. You do want to get better, don't you?
I guess.
Then take it.
Alright.
Whoa, what are you doing?
Get out!
Where did you find this stuff? Why are you doing this?
It's none of your business. Get out!
Whoa, Sarthak, I just want to help you find the help that you need. Wait, this can go two ways.
Alright, please help me.
Okay, what do you need?
I really don't want to go down this path. Help and support and kindness is really nice.
Alright, well, I'll try to make it more easier on you. And we can get you more equipment to prepare yourself. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Alright. It's been a lot since I've seen you. How things have been going? Your mother tells me that you've had a counter of drugs until now.
Yeah, I don't know what else to turn to. One of my friends told me that drugs might help. It helped them, but it surely helped me.
That's good. You did realize the drugs are on the aspect.
No, I'm sick and tired of you nagging me so much.
Sarthak, this isn't okay. I've seen how this ends, and it's not worth it. Just please let me help you.
I said, no. You're trying to manipulate me. You can't. You cannot control who I am. You cannot change who I am.
Our flyer shows the effect of drugs on our physical and mental health. It also includes to help, tips to help people, people's problems relating to drugs and mental health, including the National Crisis Hotline and our own mock phone number.
We made a prototype of our, of our project, Shining Next Gen, to provide teens with resources to not only prevent drug abuse but to stop doing drugs or not to relapse. We could use the Instagram account we made to promote our cause. Here are some examples of our prototype. It could, it has a contact page for any teens that have any questions on controlling the website or getting resources. It has an about us page for, so teens can know how our website came to be. And it would have a staff page that would give a brief description about us, the staff, and how they have experience with drug abuse. So teens would not feel more on-age about using the website and feel like the people they worked with have more experience in what they're dealing with.
Abusing drugs can have many detrimental health effects. The user will develop cardiovascular problems such as high blood pressure and possibly even heart attacks. The user will experience strokes, seizures, and impaired cognitive function. Aside from the physical impacts of drug abuse, there's also the social and mental impacts. The user will experience psychosis, anxiety, and become dependent, which means the only thing they can think about is how to secure their next dose of their poison of choice. This in turn will lead to them having strained relationships with their friends and family.
Our solution is to create a campaign called Shining Next Gen that is run by teenagers and young adults that focuses on their issues about drug abuse and mental health. We want to conduct assemblies and events for teenagers to speak up and interact with each other. We also want to spread awareness about the cycle of how drug abuse can affect teenagers' mental health and how mental health can lead to drug abuse. Something that would help our campaign is to fund some materials to host these events and assemblies.
Thank you for your time. We would now like to open the floor to any questions you may have.
Another really impressive presentation in dealing with an issue that is so important and so deep and affects so many young people and adults and families. Do any of my colleagues have any thoughts or questions? Councilmember Kaplan? Oh, I'm sorry.
You, that's okay. Like, I have to tell you, like, you guys have brought up, like, heavy topics. Mental health, drug abuse, homelessness. It's a lot to think about. I think one of the things, like, in going through this, have you found that your friends would more than likely listen to you versus their parents? Like, what, in going through of how do we have these, these difficult discussions, did you, did you find something that, that might, might seem like it would be more responsive? Both of you can come up and respond.
Okay. So I've seen people in my school actually take, like, not to be, like, really heavy or anything, but I've seen people I know take acid before. And I've, and I've seen them talk to their counselors, and I've seen them talk to their parents, and it never gets better. It gets worse. I've had friends tell me, oh, well, this person started off with hard drugs before even getting to any of the other stuff, and it, it's terrifying. And, but when there's people, like, I've had a friend, like, a close friend have really bad issues with drugs. And once I spoke to her and I said, hey, you are going down the wrong path, she listened to me. She didn't listen to her parents. Her parents didn't, they, they don't understand because it's not like they don't try to understand. They definitely do. But because of how the world is shaping, kids and teenagers don't, they, they're going through different things than adults went through when they were teenagers. With use of social media, with how everyone grows up, they, it, it's a different generation already. Even though it was maybe 10, 20 years ago, it's still a different generation. And I feel like teenagers need to help each other and act more as a community than act against each other. Even if you don't like the person, you can still help them because drugs isn't the answer ever.
Just to echo off, most of my friends have condoned using drugs or things like weed or nicotine. And for the parents, it's not like they don't want to help, but they've grew in a different age but they grew in a different age where things are different to them in the new age, so they can't fully connect to how teens feel in certain aspects. But teens will listen more if someone that they can relate is talking to them about the same topic.
Thank you. I mean, as a mom, that hits hard. Listening to you too. And again, I would truly suggest go talk to your local school boards. Talk to your principal. See what kind of clubs that you can do that can be student-led. Knowing that having this peer resource may be some of the answers that adults can't find. But thank you for digging into this and sharing your stories. It really is totally relevant. And a little bit of a gut punch as a parent, you know, how do we relate to our kids and help them? And sometimes it may be the friends that they have and the peers around them. So thank you.
So one of the constant themes throughout most of these presentations is the power of peers. It's really, and it's, I mean, it's so obvious, but it isn't obvious. Right? And how much, and how much power you all have? How much power you have to not only influence public bodies like this, but how much power you have to affect the lives of the people you know and go to school with? Both young people, but also adults? In terms of the way you model your own behavior, your own leadership? It's really, really powerful, all of you. This panel's up here now is wonderful, but all of you, you have power inside of you. I hope that you feel that and see it. You save one life, right? As the old faith saying goes, it's as if you saved the entire world. Well, you can save and help many lives. And that's what your ideas are helping to further. So thank you. Okay, D. I'm sorry. Did you go? Sorry. Good to see you. No, no. Thank you all. Thank you all so much. That concludes, so here's what we're gonna do. Can we do this logistically? If all eight of the panels were to come on? It's 72 people. There must be a fire code here somewhere that... I would take it how nice it would be to get a picture with everybody.
Yeah.
What do you suggest?
Mayor, can I do a closing comment? Is that okay?
Oh, yes, of course. And we do have public testimony, but I just don't know whether to take that. What's that? Okay, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna have Councilmember Vang make a closing comment. We're gonna take the public testimony. And then we're gonna take a recess, and we're gonna go on out and take a big picture here. Is that okay? Our police officers, you guys okay with that? Is that all right?
I figured you might want to go close. I didn't know.
No, I don't need to. I want you to.
So first, I just want to say congratulations to this year's cohort, to all our amazing youth for putting your heart, right? Having the courage to come up here and present on some really heavy topics. But I also want to take this opportunity to invite Sarah to come up because I think it's really important to recognize, yes, you, Sarah. And Rhonda, Maria, and all our certified educators as well to the front. Any other staff? I see your big boss, Jackie. I saw her earlier too. But I really just want to take this moment to say thank you to our city staff and our certified teachers and our youth, our cohort that actually, our peer educators that came back to actually work with the new cohort. Just thank you so much for your heart and hustle. You know, for the past three years, I've been incredibly impressed by all our young people, but not surprised, right, by their intelligence. And really, this program cannot happen without our staff. And really, Sarah, I want to say thank you to you, the team, everyone at YPSI, all our youth folks, all our youth staff. I see y'all in the back. Just thank you so much. So a round of applause to all of you for your hard work. And I can't wait to be there for graduation, right? I think that's coming up pretty soon too. But congratulations to this year's cohort. I'm truly proud of everything y'all have accomplished. And with that, I'll hand it over back to the mayor.
Thank you. I think that was a great conclusion. Thank you. A great close. Okay, so you guys, if you don't mind sitting down, we're gonna hear from the public. And then I'm just revising on the fly here. We do have then council ideas and questions. And then we have four people who want to speak on items not on the agenda. So maybe we ought to do all that. And then, what's that? We're gonna do council comments first. Of course, I got it. Yeah, so by the time we take the picture, the meeting will be over, right? And that'll be the last thing that we will do so that we don't have to come back. Now, I know you're absolutely ready to take council comments before public testimony is on the agenda, but we do have two people who want to testify on this item. So they have that right, and we will hear from them.
I have three speakers to speak on this agenda item. Ryan Misano, Mac Worthy, then Stephen Barassa.
It's sad we have to deal with the city council, which hasn't learned the First Amendment themselves. And so they can't train students on considering different views. One attribute I hope that every child learns is to not imitate the mayor and city council and to be offended by everything and ashamed of nothing. My website is misano news dot com. Every child should read this so you can learn about the lies you are told by politicians, television, radio, celebrities, social media, and schools every single day. I was a child. I had a wonderful teacher in the sixth grade who was passionate and intense about teaching critical thinking to students. Ms. Loney taught us to prove what we believed in and relentlessly question our beliefs and not to just accept what the media, television, politicians, social media, newspapers, and radio told us. One thing I will always admire about her, and that will live on long after her death, is she refused to tell us children what her political beliefs are because she firmly believed that was for us to do on our own with our parents. So I am appalled that this Sacramento City Council, which routinely violates the free speech rights of speakers, invites young impressionable speakers up to City Hall. The schools don't teach the students history, other than the white man is bad. They don't teach them the history of Greece, Rome, or America. But somehow, the students are brought up here to discuss topics that parents and adults in the community should be guiding them on. I see Mindy Cuppy tell the students she's excited to see them. Yet, when me and other men come up to tell the truth after thousands of hours of study and suffering, you not only aren't excited to see us, you are positively afraid of hearing the truth. To the children, I hope you learn what this Sacramento City Council has never learned and shows no sign of learning anytime soon. And that is, it's better to be slapped with the truth than kissed with a lie.
Thank you for your comments. Mac Worthy?
Back here on the critical issue. What I speak here is on the freedom of speech, and I can back it up on oath. People, once upon a time, there was one language on earth. And they tried serving God's spirit to fire languages. So be careful what you're trying to do. Now, I came to California at 19 years old at De La Rosa Heights with $34 in my pocket. When I turned 21 years old, I had my business going. I'll be 83 years old September 3rd, right here. Most of that time here. Now, what you all talking about, could you put that on?
It's not working.
Okay. The same thing you talked to here, I raised it 47 years ago. Wasn't a one of you born? Wasn't a one of you born 47 years ago? I raised it. That is right there. That's the documentation right there. How did I know? Because I cherish growing up in surrogation. I'm not a black man, an African. I'm an American Negro. South Carolina, red dirt, hundred circle. Grew up on a farm, plowing mule, picking cotton, milking cow. I'm here. How did I get here? The government brought me here on my own because I opposed the Sixty movement. The most disgraced thing ever happened to black people is forced integration. When the husband was put out of the house and the wife would get a check, that's where your spouse came in. Tell the truth here. Kids, you will never, this thing here is about funding another program that leading you in a direction that you will never accomplish independence and equality.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Stephen Barassa on this agenda item.
Well, I'm really impressed that we got to see the presentations today. I'm really glad I got to see all of those presentations. And it made my mind just stir, just thinking about all these issues that were brought forth this evening and all the hard work that these students did. And also, the way they came up to this dais and spoke very clearly and didn't seem nervous at all. That was really great. And some thoughts came to mind. You know, I'm disappointed with the push for multiculturalism, trying to divide everybody into different groups, you know? My brother's half-black, and he went to Africa on a trip, dream vacation with his fiancee, and he told them, I'm African-American. Well, the African said, no, you're not. You don't know anything about Africa. This is your first time being here. You're not African, buddy. You're American. And you know, when we look at this room of beautiful faces, all colors, all family backgrounds, we all come from one culture. We're all part of one culture, and that's the American culture. And we should be proud of that and proud of the American experiment and the American experience. And get back to the idea of a melting pot, where many different backgrounds, but we're all one people here tonight. Thank you.
Let's now move, and again, ask just if you can all be patient because we really want to take that picture. I think it'll be about 10 more minutes or so. Council ideas and questions. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to announce that the Sacramento Powwow is back for the 29th year. If you haven't stopped by, you should. It's traditionally the second weekend of August, so that's August 9th through 11th this year at the O'Neil Park on Broadway. All are welcome. You can view dancing and informational booths. You could also purchase native food and crafts. Admission for adults is $7, $4 for those 18 and under, and free for those under five and seniors. So go check it out. It's really, really cool, especially the cultural group. I think you'll really enjoy yourselves. And then, secondly, on a more sober note, I just want to note that I've had multiple shootings in my district in the last couple of weeks involving young people 24 years old and under. And so I've talked to Councilmember Jennings earlier today, who's an expert on this dais on violence prevention. And I'd really like to ask the city manager for a report back to council on youth homicides and gun violence trends. Just a few years ago, we achieved zero youth homicides in the city of Sacramento for two years. And we did that through a suite of programs and interventions that were designed by research and informed by folks who were impacted by gun violence. And I just really think it's important that we hold ourselves to that standard. I've been really heartbroken by some of the incidents in my district in the last couple of weeks. So would really appreciate a report back as soon as feasible on what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thank you, Mayor. Would love to echo Councilwoman Valenzuela on that report back as well. And so just wanted to, on record, give her my support. And hopefully, we can get that report back to the council as soon as possible. I have a few community announcements and then also an AB 1234 report. I just want to let you all know that this Saturday, July 27th, led by actually the mayor's office, Mayor's Office of Community Engagement, there will be a town hall in District 8 in South Sacramento. And it's actually happening at Luther Burbank. And so really encouraging folks to come out for our mayor-led town hall. I will be there as well. And then just wanted to remind folks, every Sunday, we now have our Metaview Certified Farmers Market. As many of you know, Metaview is a neighborhood that's food insecure. I'm really happy that we have the farmers market and really encouraging folks to come out to that. And then also, just another event this Sunday, there's an event at Metaview Park called the Unity in the Community Summer Party. This is actually a grantee from our city festival grant funding. It's gonna be a family fun event with bounce houses, gang trucks, sports, DJ live music, vendors, food trucks, and so much more. So really encouraging folks to come to that. And then for my AB 1234 report, as someone along with Coach, Councilmember Jennings, that serve on SECOG, I had the opportunity to go with my colleagues on the SECOG board for the Peer Region Tour in Denver, Colorado. We took this trip right after actually our last meeting before council recess. And I had an opportunity to go to Denver for two days to actually meet members of DRACOG, which is the SECOG version in Denver. And there, we had an opportunity to really learn more about their transportation system and their regional housing strategy. I have a lot to share of what I've learned. I think there's a lot of things we can learn from Denver, but I think there's a lot of great things we're currently doing now. So just want to give kudos to Sacramento as well. But there was definitely a lot of lessons learned from that trip. Very similar history around redlining and government policy that really shaped their poor outcomes in Denver, but what the regional leaders there are doing to fix that. And Denver in particular, their region is also very similar to our population in terms of diversity and age as well. And so there was a lot that I learned with my colleagues. Lot to report back, but just wanted to make sure that I share that. And again, I'm currently on the board with SECOG, with Councilmember Jennings, and it was great to attend that and taking all that learning and going to apply it to our board meetings and here at the city. So that's my update. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. For all of our youth that live, go to school in District 1 or live in North Natomas, I want to introduce you to my district director, Mateo. So Mateo, raise your hand. I have a one-youth program for all of our high school students that you are welcome to sign up for. We do tree plantings, community cleanups. You help with my events. We also do fun events at my Resource Center if you belong. And the top volunteers, I got to take to the Kings game last year. So if you want to get involved in the community, please come say hi and give your information to my district director. But this Friday, we're also having a free movie at the North Natomas Regional Park. We are playing Inkanto. Movie begins at dusk, but we'll have free popcorn and water beginning at 7:00 PM. And then on Saturday, we have our North Natomas Farmers Market, 8:30 to 12:30. And if y'all want to participate in yoga, it's free from 9:00 to 10:00 at the North Natomas Regional Park. And again, Friday, August 2nd, beginning at 6:00 PM. Music probably starts about 6:30 on August 2nd. It's gonna be our AAPI celebration. We're gonna have vendors and food trucks and bounce houses and a bunch more. So everybody is welcome to come on out.
Sounds great. Councilmember Tao?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I would just commend my community folks who hosted our event this Saturday, Unity in the Community Festival, Mutual Assistance Network and Rebranding New. It was an event focused on bringing the community together, celebrating diversity, and registering the community to vote. We were able to get a lot of folks registered to vote and just learn about the importance of voting. And just wanted to share some events with the community upcoming this week. First off is a cultural exhibit hosted by Monge Youth and Parents United on Friday, the 26th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. This showcase will be at 631 Eleanor Avenue. The exhibit will showcase works by Health Tri-Fusion Sisters, Shang and Ming, highlighting Monge American pioneers. And then on Saturday, we will be hosting, along with the Measure L Commission, the Sacramento Children's Fund. This strategic investment info session is hosted by the City Sacramento's Children's Planning and Oversight Committee. I encourage member of the public to come learn about Measure L and how it can impact our community. The committee will take place at Hagerwood Community Center on July 27th at 4:00 PM. And then on Monday, July 29th, I would encourage the public to also participate in an update with our Public Works Department and our office, along with the Sacramento Library, on an update on the North Sacramento Hagerwood Library. We will be hosting an info session from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We hope to gather feedback from the public and have comments on design elements of that project. It will be at the old S and R building or the new site for the library, 1124 De Paso Boulevard. That is all.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two musical concerts that are taking place in District 7. Want to join us on Friday, this Friday, July 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Bill Coolidge Park in the Southland Park neighborhood? We're gonna have the wonderful sounds of Virginia airs Dawson and Airplay. So we encourage you to bring your chairs, blankets, family, and friends, and join us for a wonderful evening of jazz. And then, secondly, Music in the Park at Curtis Park. That'll take place Sunday, July 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. A free concert featuring On Air, which plays classic rock favorites. There'll be a variety of food trucks. They'll be there. And we hope that the temperature will be much cooler than it's been throughout the months of July so far. Also, I'll be sponsoring free face painting for all the kids who come to the concert. So those are my two announcements, July 26th and July 28th.
I just want to say, so many great events that I have the privilege to go to. But I want to especially just call out Councilmember Tao and the reopening of Sammy's De Paso Boulevard this past week was just really incredible. About community fighting for what it wants and deserves. And opened in 1944 when some hard times. The owners, great people, stuck with it, really great leadership. And it's just a very special event. That kind of stuff goes on all the time in Sacramento. Got to continue it. Thanks. All right, we're gonna end with a couple of members of the public, some of whom we heard from already. But they're right to come on up and provide more testimony.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four speakers. Ryan Misano, Julius, Mac Worthy, and Richard Hillard.
Excuse me. Yeah, if the students want to start, maybe one second, Mr. Misano. We'll let you speak. But maybe if the students want to start going outside, we can start gathering for the picture, okay? Right.
This is what they teach them. Don't listen. Brainwash them young. Terrible, terrible job of teaching kids. No problem. We're gonna reboot yourself. What's that? Thanks for my compliment. Trying to. Shamed at nothing, offended at everything.
Somebody goes up to take the picture.
Oh, that's a great idea. Okay.
Mr. Misano, I think you can start.
The camera is out of order.
It's out of order?
Please proceed.
The cameras are in order for children to speak, but out of order for adults to speak. Just love how that works. But it's a terrible example that you're setting for these young children because what this is, is what happened in China and Russia before 100 million were murdered. This is indoctrination. It's the divisiveness of communism. And we should know who are 10 communists in Russia and China who are responsible for the murder of 100 million. Because if we don't know this, how can we stop it from happening here? It's gonna be very hard to do. Daryl Steinberg is making $220,566. That was last year. Now, when politics started here in America in 1944... Now, when politics started here in America in Sacramento, politicians were wealthy enough to serve and not be paid. They actually worked hard and made their own money and weren't parasites that needed to be weaned off the teats of the Sacramento taxpayer. So, I don't know when we're gonna wean all of you off the teats, but you all need to be weaned, because you're not doing anything for this city. $220,000. The rest of you council members, the reason why you interrupt me so much and try to shut me down is because you're all puppets, and you're making $140,000 with benefits, and that is what you're taking like Pontius Pilate and Judas to sell us out as citizens. And then, what you're trained to do is to indoctrinate these children into these malevolent agendas, which you oughta be ashamed of yourself. Now, the men are the real targets. The women, most of them are young, they don't know what's going on. I kind of overlook them. Some of them, second generation here in America. So, you don't even understand American history. You certainly don't understand Western civilization, which is what this nation is based upon. And it's time you should learn that, because how are you gonna rule this nation if you don't know its history accurately? So, yeah, this is, it's corruption, and hopefully you guys repent, because you will reap what you sow.
Thank you for your comments. Julius. Julius, then Mac Worthy, then Richard Hillard.
Good evening, city council members. I hope you're all doing well. Let me start by saying that I love all people, but that doesn't mean that all people are absolved from criticism, including me. What frustrates me is when the city council members preach free speech until it's speech they disagree with. If I said white people are a threat to America, or that the system is full of white supremacists, no one would bat an eye, because it's all part of the plan to divide the races. But if I talk about who controls the government, the media, education, entertainment, et cetera, I will be labeled an anti-Semi and possibly have my speech shut down. We have a right to speak on matters not on the agenda, but are told that we are told to keep it within city ordinances. If we cannot speak on concerns to the point where our speech is shut down, doesn't that affect everyone, especially in the city of Sacramento? Is that not within city ordinances if our free speech is under attack? The reason why you should not take these people seriously when they claim to be for racial inclusivity, but will shut down an American who happens to be black because he said the word Jews? To learn who rules over you, find out who you're not allowed to criticize. There's a laundry list of corruption, but we'll start with the attack on free speech, because if we don't have free speech, that laundry list of corruption will disappear. The reason the young people are messed up is that we keep indoctrinating them and telling them that because of their skin color, they are oppressed by those who are not their skin color, AKA the white man. The media and institutions are pushing the ideology that gender is a spectrum and that you can identify as anything. The government would rather mentally kidnap your children than stand for the rights of parents. This stops the moment we start speaking up.
Thank you for your comments. Mac Worthy.
On the freedom of speech again. What we wanna tell young Negro babies, look at the parents that were born 47-years ago on their versatility and driver's license. It will not say African-American, say Negro. The people, see, we're misleading. Black history sociology, that's garbage. Don't go to school for that. Was any black parents in these meetings that these people had? No. You're brainwashing the babies. Brainwash to think as you think. What can they do with their hands? Go to American River or City at night, and you can use anything on the agenda and study. But if you go in the daytime, they're gonna hand you their total curriculum. So, get started with something on your own. No government never built a city in America. Free enterprise. Free enterprise is a key component to economics. We are getting ready to go into a time of choosing a president. We could fall into a civil war. Let the people know for Harris to become president, you're gonna falsify by absentee ballots, is what's happened before, that includes NAACP, churches, nonprofit organizations, which have the files. I had over 3,000 names in the NAACP house, and I ran for president of the NAACP. 90% of them are dead. So, what was the NAACP? When drugs came to the black neighborhood, how did they come? Through entertainment. Who controlled entertainment? Wake up, you know? I'm not a fool here for 83-years. How did I make it? On my own. Think outside of the block. Do something for yourself.
Thank you for your comments. Richard Hillard is our final speaker.
Good evening, council members. I'll try to keep this as short and sweet as possible, because it's been a long evening. The reason I'm keen to type, I'm a 25-year resident of the city of Sacramento. This is the first meeting I've ever come to, but I thought that, you know, the old expression, if you see something, say something. And something was happening to me, and so I wanted to share with, wanted to let anybody else know also that it might be happening to them as well. I had an issue with the code enforcement people, and they're kind of out of control, and they, I felt like I was being targeted and gone after, and I... After this happened, I shared it with all these council members on the panel. I did have one council office call me back, and Mr. Eduardo Moreno from Council 3 did have a nice call with me, and I appreciated that. My council member is District 2, and I notified them of the problem right away, and they were very helpful to me and have spoken to me many times. But like I said, it was, see something, say something. And it all revolved around the fact that as a hobby, I kind of buy storage units, and I bring them to my house in my little trailer. I sort everything out, throw out the trash, and a lot of the stuff I give to one of the groups that was mentioned by Ms. Kaplan. I donate a lot of stuff to the weave ladies, so they can sell it, make money, support the women. I also donate to the homeless people, and it seemed like the code enforcement people were doing everything they could to make sure that they stopped me from doing what I was doing. And so, I did call the mayor's office right away after I had an appeal hearing, where I got halfway through the appeal hearing, and the code enforcement people basically just wanted to shut me down. They said, "We've heard enough, and let's move on."
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
We'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. We've heard council ideas and questions, and public testimony is not on the agenda. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, we are adjourned. Thank you.